This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're gonna call the orders in Monterey Select Board at six oh four P M on December twenty third. We have everyone present here in town hall as well as the town administrator. So the first order of business is the community center job description and posting, and we basically just need to agree on the title, if I understand that. So that we can get the job posted.
Right, and was there, did they put it down? Did they make a decision?
Oh, I heard was, it's like a program manager.
Yeah, program manager.
Yeah, this is for the community center, be a program manager.
Yep.
That's what they agreed on?
Yeah, Laurie and I had a really good conversation and she totally understands and, you know, I gave all the various ideas that the H R people had and that was one she liked the best and I was okay with it, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think she, technically, I believe they called it the programs manager?
Yeah.
The programs manager.
Good, that's easy.
So.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, thank you. My pleasure, and Laurie, Laurie and I had a really good, productive, positive conversation.
I love her today, I was in the town meeting.
A good idea.
So, I guess we'll get it posted kind of as soon as possible.
Like, I started it on Indeed, just.
Not expecting a lot of movement in the week between, in this holiday week, but whether it happens this week or next week.
It's crazy things happen. I'm not expecting it either, but you just never know when someone will happen to be between things and want something.
Yeah. So, we got an open meeting law complaint from someone who doesn't live in Massachusetts but is an open meeting law enforcer.
From the state of Massachusetts.
Self-assigned Alabama.
So, I drafted up a response, which I didn't send you because I didn't want to violate the open meeting law, but.
Then you can send it to us now, though.
I did send it, I did send it, so, let me see, is it too long to read? I'll read it. The Monterey Select Board received your open meeting law complaint on December fifteenth, twenty twenty four. You alleged the board holding illegal emergency meeting when it posted notice of meeting on November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and met later that same day. As you note, the purpose of the meeting was to appoint a temporary town clerk so that the clerk, so that that clerk could swear into office a recently elected member of the regional school district who is a resident of Monterey. The school committee member was needed to participate in that night's meeting of the regional school committee. On December twenty third, the select board met to discuss your complaint. The circumstances of the meeting were unique. In fact, the board has not held an emergency meeting the entire time of the board chair's tenure as chair of the board for more than two and a half years. The unique circumstances of the reason for the meeting support the board's decision to hold an emergency meeting. The board therefore concludes that it did not violate the open meeting law. The open meeting law requires that notices of every meeting shall be posted at least forty-eight hours in advance, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, except in the case, except in the case of an emergency. An emergency is a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate action. Monterey resident Kim Alcantara was elected to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District Committee by voters of all five member towns on November five, twenty twenty four. Monterey's election results were certified on November twenty 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 four, the last day on which the results could be certified. Monterey's results were delayed until the last possible date because its town clerk, Chris Andrews, is undergoing chemotherapy for a recent cancer diagnosis and is unable to work on a regular schedule. Monterey's chair of the select board, Justin Maycock, received an email from Miss Alcantara on Sunday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, at four forty P M, which read, and I won't read the email, but it's saying that she needs to be appointed to the school committee before the meeting tomorrow. Between receiving the email and the time of posting notice of the emergency meeting, Mr. Maycock explored various courses of action to ensure that Miss Alcantara could be sworn in so that she could attend that night's meeting of the school committee. The town did not have an assistant or temporary town clerk. Mr. Andrews was not available to swear her in. Mr. Maycock did not have any information or guidance that Miss Alcantara could have been sworn in by someone in the office of the secretary of the Commonwealth or any other public, neither of which would provide an official town record that Miss Alcantara had taken her oath of office, nor by the town moderator. School committee council find that it was not comfortable that any town clerk from the town in the regional school district could take Miss Alcantara's oath. Since those clerks could not verify that Miss Alcantara was a registered voter of Monterey, a requirement to hold the office. In short, by twelve thirteen P M, when the notice was posted for a one P M meeting, Mr. Maycock believed that all other options had been exhausted. The matters that led to the need for an emergency meeting of the Monterey Select Board could not have been anticipated by Chair Maycock, nor were they matters within his control. Mr. Maycock first learned of this issue on Sunday afternoon before the scheduled Monday evening meeting of the regional school committee. Mr. Maycock could not postpone the regional school committee's meeting. He was informed by Miss Alcantara that her attendance at the meeting was critical. He also knew that school committee's council find that only swearing in by Monterey's town clerk was effective. Mr. Maycock reasonably relied on representations of Miss Alcantara and opinion of school council and determined that he had no choice but to call an emergency meeting to appoint a temporary town clerk. The select board held its emergency meeting in open session at one P M on November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, and appointed Mari Enoch as temporary town clerk.
To serve.
To serve.
Yeah.
For two business days, just so that Miss Alcantara's oath could be taken. The minutes of the board's November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting are attached. Of course, it was not sufficient just to appoint Miss Enoch. The moderator had to give the oath of office to Miss Enoch, who would then be able to take the oath of Miss Alcantara, all which had to occur in time for Miss Alcantara to participate in the regional school district seven P M meeting. Meeting at one P M afforded the opportunity for all steps to be taken to permit Miss Alcantara's participation. She was elected as the vice chair of the regional school committee at the November twenty fifth meeting. The Monterey Select Board takes serious complaints with the open meeting law. Mr. Andrews has since appointed an assistant town clerk so that this situation will not reoccur. Nonetheless, under these circumstances, the select board believes that this situation meets the definition of emergency under the open meeting law, thus there was no violation.
So, there's only two things I flagged. On the second paragraph, the first sentence, "On December twenty third, the select board met to discuss your complaint. The circumstances of the meeting were unique." That makes it sound like it was our meeting on the twenty third.
Yes.
Was the meeting, so the circumstances of the meeting in question?
Yeah.
Or of the special meeting or the emergency meeting were unique?
What if we said the November twenty fifth?
Right, the other way.
November twenty fifth.
And the second one is, I don't think we should be specifically saying what the health issue from Mr. Andrews.
Yeah.
Uh, how about?
Of course.
Uh, well, his name's in my database.
Okay.
Um, results was related, is the last one related because it's town clerk, Chris Andrews, uh, is gravely ill?
Yeah, that's a very weird way to put it.
Or seriously ill. Yeah, gravely ill and unable to work regularly.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a not ideal to put that in there, but it's part of the situation.
But it's a reality, and it is why this occurred, and including the time they got it. By the way, do we, oddly, don't we respond to this state about our complaint, or do we respond to the person?
Respond to the person.
Okay.
They're, and I think.
If they upsum it, then, okay.
We, we might also need to say the state, but basically it's down that person. Do they want to bring it to the?
Right, right.
To the next level, to the state. Right now, this individual in particular has a few pending complaints at the state level for various towns.
Okay, I mean, clearly, something better to do with this town.
So, I think, I will double check exactly who gets sent to, but I think basically it goes to him first, and then it's his.
Did you have Donald's check, too?
Donna wrote it.
Oh, wrote it, okay.
I, yeah, I don't call myself Chair Maycock or Mr. Maycock. Donna wrote it, which I felt.
It's kind of nice, right, Chair Maycock?
Which I felt was more, you know, as soon as I read it, I sent it to her and I said, here's the facts. And then, you know, so I provided a lot of the factual information, but she wrote it up and I didn't, it's been a while since I had an open meeting law complaint. I forgot, in your letter, you can either take accountability for the violation or claim that there was no violation, and then they review it, and then.
Then make a decision.
They make a whole new decision, so.
I think it's otherwise good.
I think it's good. So, you had, you spent so much time.
Yeah, nothing, a waste of space and money. I mean, I'm sure there are serious violations, but come on.
Okay, so I will, I'll sign that. There were just a couple of edits there. Roger, I'll get you a final copy and then sign it and get it sent out and attach the minutes. Moving on, we have another unique situation concerning the school committee, which is that they do negotiations with the teachers union, as I understand it, and there's a representative from Sheffield who is willing to continue to serve, but we need to send someone to a point?
Yes, my understanding is the representative from Sheffield, who was, four years ago, voted to be the representative at the negotiations table and didn't want to do it this time around, so a group of select board members from the other towns voted for another person, and that person backed out, and so the other person, the original person was.
Who didn't want to do it?
Came back, who didn't want to do it, came back and said they would do it, but they need a group of members of select boards, one member from each select board, basically to get over Zoom and say, yes, we vote for that person.
When do they want to do it?
I forget when the Zoom was, it's, um.
It's in early January?
Yeah, I think it's in the beginning.
It's getting wild when I'm doing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
No, that's fair.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
We're doing all the Zoom with the Berkshire region. I'm getting pretty good with those afternoon meetings.
I will, I'll reach out to Michelle from, from the Berkshire, from the school district.
Yeah, I'm just, I'll pop in the mail and I'll make sure it gets on my calendar. I've got the, I have a tent at the end of January, but we're getting around time.
Next up, we have the administrative assistant slash highway office manager position. We got a list from Jim about the duties of what the position could look like. Did you also get the list from your Marlboro?
I haven't yet, no.
Okay.
No.
Um.
I'll reach out.
We're kind of at a crossroads.
Well, there's, there's a lot of different responsibilities in here. The one that, um.
I thought it was a pretty.
It's a pretty detailed thing, you know, I don't know it's all, but I think it's, you know, comprehensive list. I mean, everything from D P, D E P Clean Water Act and all that. The thing I want to point out is that on the, when we select someone on these invoices, because we talked about, I think last week, the invoice, the person would be working, what, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday and Wednesday, Wednesday, fourth.
Yeah, because the invoices are due at three o'clock Thursday. And, you know, from my only doing it twice, a lot of the invoices came in on Thursday morning. That means this guy would get done, and the one time, not the second time I did them, it was only two or three, the second time was like twelve. So, you know, it's, that's, you know, for me.
Twelve P M or twelve invoices.
Twelve, twelve invoices, a full sheet. So, when we go to do this, it's like, how do we structure? Now, we can also go back to the department heads and say, this is how invoices work. You're doing it by this date. If it's not here by Wednesday at twelve noon, it's not getting paid to the next cycle.
Yeah.
So, we need to document that. So, it's just one of the things when we go to think about putting that who this person is, what are their hours?
Right.
If they work, because we don't want to create a thing, well, we hired him to do invoices, but he stuck Thursday morning because, and look, I didn't say last week quite a few that first cycle, a lot of those invoices went back to July, and they went.
Right.
You know, we need, I think, with an opportunity, particularly for how invoices are being handled, I can do some of that work just to document it, and then when we go ahead and do the, find someone, we talk about why, this is why we're doing the hours, and then if we want to change it. So, we build realistic expectations.
So, I have, I agree, everything you said. I have two thoughts. One is, the person we had clocked to offer to that we were put off by the amount, she wants that higher amount because there's no benefits, but she already has benefits with Marlboro. I think offering her the same amount she gets per hour down there is not unreasonable for the number of hours worked. I think she can choose to say no, but at the end of the day, people, like, it's a negotiating thing. I don't blame her for asking.
It's okay to ask. And it's okay for us to say no?
Exactly, and it's okay for us, it's okay for us to offer a different amount and for her to say no. That's the nature of the beast.
Yeah, especially for those who.
I, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people to say, this is when we have someone that can do billing. Normally, you know, it has to be in by Thursday. Now, it's gonna have to be in by Wednesday at noon, so that your.
Yeah.
Bills get processed expeditiously. They usually have them before then, so it's a question of when they actually choose to bring them in.
You know, the can of worms has been opened, okay? So, it's okay to say, you know, you receive an invoice, it should be in the, wherever we say, where you put some, within X amount, twenty-four, forty-eight, you have business out.
If you, if you want to be very timely, get it timely, right.
I like your suggestion of.
Timestamping when they get.
I can get one for eighteen ninety-five off of the invoice.
I already have it, I've been doing it already.
There you go.
That would be interesting, because it gives you, you know, we need to improve the process, but it's not one person, it's a process and it's multiple.
It helps allow for proper accountability.
Right.
Like, did you get, it didn't get paid, when did you get it in? And, and then we know where the chain of command broke down.
Right, right, yeah.
You can't fix it unless you know where it's broken.
That's right, so, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, yeah.
I'm all for a bill-paying procedure, because it's, it's boggled me a little bit over the years how drastically different it is for different departments, and I'd like to kind of streamline it to, I, I think at the end of the day, there just are going to be a couple of departments that have the time and energy to process their own invoices.
Well, I think, if you want.
And those that won't, but there shouldn't be so many different ways of it's done.
Always can happen, you know, candidly, Department of Highway has more invoices. And really, the fire, when you get into their phone bill situation, and we need to take a look at electric builders, probably two hours a man to save there, but, you know, the, the system's dependent on everybody, so if they're not getting it in, you know, the library and the police department do a great job. They put their own invoices in, okay, so it can be done, and I understand why we're supporting the fire department and the department. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, just gotta have, this is when it's gonna be done. And then if someone says, there's a problem, we can go back, check your stamp, take a look at it, it'll be, you know, so. I, I, it won't take me much, I'll work on it in the next week or two. Here's the process, then we can find it. There's department head's responsibilities, there's, there's some process in the invoices. And the one thing we can also do is, is when we create that Excel spreadsheet that has the twelve, we mail, email them out to the fire department chief, and that way, if they get, someone that says, oh, I haven't been paid, they can go back and say, what is the invoice number? What's the date on it? I can look at this spreadsheet and tell you if you, if it's been processed. Because there's been a few occasions, like Canyon Auto Supplies, they, the checkout loss, something happened, so we were re-entering the, they were late again, giving them. So, you know, that will give them information.
Does that mean we sent them a check, but it never got cashed?
Yeah, but we don't, you know, you know.
Checked them a couple times.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, but we can improve upon it.
Yeah, for sure.
But I, I will take the part of, like, writing a, here's clear, posted.
A process.
A process.
Meanwhile, what do we want to do about that position? Do you want to re-approach that person in your Marlboro? Do you want, do we just want to post it somewhere?
I think we should try posting it somewhere. I think we can pick two avenues, you know.
There's no harm in putting it out there, even if we do approach it. You made a funny face, I wasn't sure what that meant. Does that mean you don't feel comfortable going back there and asking?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm conflicted, because in one, in one, I think if we go back to her, the reading the room, what I'm getting is we'll offer her what she makes in Marlboro, which I think is very fair, to match what someone makes in another town.
Right.
Um, benefits aside, I'm conflicted, because on one hand, it, it seems like the right fix for our situation, and like, those hours would be good to use. There's the parity issue, but there's also, if we start parcelling out a job, we're less likely to combine into a full-time position, which I think is very attractive in the market right now. So, if we start saying, okay, we're gonna hire this position out for six hours, and this position, and then we hire for the other eight hours, or whatever it may be, then we hire a town, you know, whatever the situation may be, we start hiring a bunch of little positions, we lose the opportunity to hire one person and kind of retain them and grow that one person.
There's always the possibility that that, that we change a position, we offer to someone who's in-house, that person. They're not usually exclusive.
No, I agree. I think the problem is in this.
Because we don't have that full-time person, we don't have that full-time job this minute, not to offer any.
No, we don't, yeah.
Right, so what I'm saying is, I totally see your point, and I absolutely agree with you, but it's not a start with that. So, how do we get from here to there? And the only way I can think of to do that is to, if we have a quality person that might do this, perfect a repeat of the job, but we don't have a clear job description or a clear function or any clarity on what that job would be at this moment, but we think we might within the next three or four months, there's always the possibility when we create that to say, is this something you'd be interested in growing into, or is it not interesting?
Yeah, I think I'm worried about this particular candidate, not worried about, but just thinking that they already have a situation in their hometown.
And then we'd be poaching.
Well, not even about the poaching, but like, I just don't think, we're, we're talking about, it was kind of like when we had an experienced town clerk come in and kind of help out the town's clerk's office for a few hours, we, we never thought that she was interested in becoming the town clerk.
Right.
She was just helping out, and I think.
And maybe this will be a similar thing, then she'll be helping us out until we find someone that's her.
Yeah, we do love for someone to have some of their skills, which she'd be willing to train.
I don't, I don't know, I, I don't think she'd be interested in any temporary job, too. That is what I don't.
We don't know, but like you said earlier, you don't ask, you don't know, right?
Right.
So, I, I think we take it as, you know, let's get it posted and see if there's anything that comes in.
Yeah.
What I, what I do think is about the other role is like, taking the notes for, you know, doing all the minutes for the planning board or, you know, for the zoning for us, where does that all fit in this picture? Because this is a pretty, that would be a very diverse skill.
Very, very.
You'd have to be someone with a wide spectrum.
And, you know, should we need to, and we, at one point, we flitter the thought of it, that clerk and that person maybe being the same person.
Yeah.
And, but again, that's yet another skill set.
Right.
Um, and, you know, we don't even know if that job would exist, so.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is, we'll go back out and post, probably just in conjunction with the community center position to streamline things, the original fourteen-hour-a-week position, and I'll reach back out to our candidate from Marlboro and say, are you, are you interested at the rate you're making in Marlboro? Come to Monterey for, still for six hours a week?
Would that make the fourteen hours, eight hours?
It would make it like six or seven.
Right, because it's a duck prize, yeah.
Right. It's, and I don't really like the idea of hiring someone at six hours a week to do minutes for the select board and planning board, because it's not enough to really get anything done. So, I. It's, I'm very conflicted, because it's like, do we take the solution that basically would alleviate oh, an issue now and basically resolve it and, and free up Roger, but kind of not really go with our long-term plan? Or do we hold out for a long-term plan, even though we've been hiring for this position on and off for three years?
Well, the other thing, which you, to give us time, you could be honest with him, say, can we do this for ninety days?
Well, she asks at the beginning if it was a temporary position. I can come back. I think maybe the result of this meeting is that it is a temporary.
It's a temporary.
And maybe it's July one.
Yeah, yeah, or something like that, until we, till we get there. And two is that we could say, you know, I don't know if July one's the date, but, you know, if we brought someone in because we uniquely want to add other skills, other responsibilities besides this, would you be willing to do some training?
Here's why I like July one. We say it's a temporary position until July first, because if she is willing to come in, then it basically would finish at the end of this fiscal year, and when we start fresh next year, we would start entirely fresh, but also it would give us enough, it would give us six months of actually some, I feel like the first month or two, you're doing more training than you're doing. Even with an experienced person, it gives us an actual, it gives us an actual benefit over those six months of, you know, just showing someone where the paperclips are.
I know where they are, I'm on that.
So, that's why I would do that, if she's even willing, but, and then meanwhile, hire, you know, or post for the, for the real whole job, and maybe that becomes something different in this budget season, maybe it becomes. Because here's what's happening, a lot of boards are relying on volunteers to do their minutes, and some are very timely and accurate, and some are, are more slow, and you can't blame them because they're volunteers, but if you add it up, I mean, I remember when Laurie was at her max, she was doing renewable energy work through the planning board, select board, finance committee, she might, she did some zoning board of appeals. But we're talking about even more than just the minutes, and that was just minutes, but it was quite a job of just doing that, so. Maybe we're talk, maybe we're talking about hiring a benefited or just under-benefited position next year, or raising the person that we have to fill the gap to that level.
I think also, there's, like, sometimes it's easier for somebody on the committee to actually do the minutes, nobody wants to do it. I mean, when I was doing it for open space, in fairness, I don't think it ever took me more than forty minutes to do one of them. I had a lot of times of plus in that, and I did the same kind of thing you did, which is I just took notes as we went through on the important things, and I, like, for the select board, it's harder, because there's a, certainly back when Laurie was doing it, there was a lot more debate and stuff, but how long does it take you to do minutes?
Um, it totally depends on how long the meeting was and what kind of.
I mean, some are two pages, some are six, but.
Hour to two and a half?
I mean, I think our meetings have, like, more, there's more meat, like, a lot of times, it's enough to say, you know, there was a discussion of, and it went on, yeah.
It's a lot different than what you're thinking.
Yeah, a lot different, but I still think that our meetings are still, I think a select board meeting can be a trickier thing than say a, the zoning board meetings are pretty.
Yeah.
Straightforward, typically.
All that being said, do we go back and offer her a temporary position, if she's even willing to do it?
If she's willing to do it.
If she's willing to do it, you know, look, you know, your earlier email and Jim not going to be available, you know, let's make the start there, because then we know what we have to go do. If she says no, then we go.
Well, that's other things we're down, highway superintendent, essentially, until July one.
I know, I know, that's a whole different discussion, but I, I just think, you know, we know we've had trouble with invoices, we, you know, there's things that we can free up his time, you know, she could start after the first week, you know, four or five weeks, we're gonna be, we're gonna be knee-deep in the middle of the budget, you know, in February.
And if she has the skillset and experience, that's probably gonna be a fairly smooth transition. I mean, she doesn't know our particular accounting for each account, but.
So, I can do it, Susan.
Here's my one recommendation. If we go back for a temporary six-month position, I would recommend that we do it at the twenty-eighth that she asked for the permanent position, because we, we're losing a lot of leverage by, by saying it's temporary and, are you gonna inconvenience her life for half a year, you know, to make a few bucks?
Right.
And I feel like, it's one thing if it's permanent. And I feel like it's one thing if it's permanent position, you know, you're, you're dealing with that sad salary parity issue for years. And I think it's different if it's an interim temporary position. That we're down a department head is part of the situation. And are just trying to bring someone in who really knows what they're doing just to help us get through half a year. And I I don't feel like we face the same parity issues.
I agree.
Under those circumstances.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, because we need to do.
Yeah, I I think we do need the, the, the support and Pete probably needs the support too. And they're down, they're already down a staff member, so. The, he's department superintendent, but he also.
He worked.
Worked, right? So, yeah, he wasn't just pushing paper.
Okay, and then in the meanwhile, we'll go back and advertise for that, for the full position. As it was previously. In his job description. You have to run the numbers though.
I was just gonna say, can, can, I'm not sure we can do.
I don't know if we can do the full position because let's see where July, August, September, October, November, December. I mean, we're halfway through the year, so we basically have.
We're at the halfway.
We can probably do it. Let's run the numbers.
I'll go through and figure it out at twenty-eight hours, twenty-eight dollars an hour, six hours.
Yeah.
And then see what's remaining.
I think we can probably, probably do it and we wouldn't hi- over-hire without a bigger budget, but we know one position's temporary. So.
And you know, I'm hoping that at least before May. Um, we'll have some better sense of what's gonna happen in town hall and how we might proceed.
Yeah. And I think even what happens out of this process will inform the budget.
Yeah.
Process. Okay, moving on, um, are there any personal policies that we need to discuss?
No, there aren't. The ones that that uh, we went over this week, there was really nothing waiting in there in my next meeting, the first, the seventh. So I would have told you last, uh, last week.
Land donation. We're basically waiting on a green light from the environmental.
Yeah.
Right.
I I did hear from Sean Archie and towards the end of the day here. And he said he didn't have any, I think he saw that.
Yeah, he saw it, yeah.
So I forwarded that to, uh, I forwarded that right after I got it to, uh, the environmental company. Environmental analysis firm there and. I just asked them if they could get it to us as quick as possible, even if maybe a possible verbal versus written. So we at least have a conversation about it, go from there. By night, that was it. Five o'clock this evening when I sent it, so if I hear from them tomorrow, I'll probably let you know.
So they did, and I know it's a holiday weekend, it's the holiday season.
Yeah.
But they did previously promise us this Friday.
By the twenty-seventh, yeah.
And Dean. I had let him know maybe last week and he's not thrilled that we're cutting it to the wire, but. It is what it is at this point and.
I mean, I think it's amazing that we got through it in the time we did. That kind of stuff sometimes takes eighteen months to finalize. It it was a big ask on his part. I don't think he recognizes that.
Yeah, no, and I think we're hoping to basically be ready to go, assuming we can get a report Friday. I asked Roger if we can't get a report, would they come talk to the slide board on Monday? And only if, I'm not trying to rush our due diligence.
Right.
But if they, if they've done all the research, if they've done all the research and there's no red flags and they just. Haven't had a chance to put that down in a report yet. And they can just come and tell us that. Now, if there's a red flag, I mean, it's totally different.
Yeah.
Ballgame, not a ballgame, not on this property, but.
Situation.
Situation. So.
Good save.
That's where we're at. Um, I'm gonna try to get a notary, Roger, I'm gonna try to recruit a notary unless you. Know somebody from Monday's meeting, if we're ready to go.
No, I don't know.
Maybe a, maybe a town clerk from another town.
I could, uh, when it's from.
Monday's the town, right?
You're trying to get a select board meeting?
Yeah, because if we.
What's for this? Oh, because for the.
If we get a green light, we need a notary to watch us three sign it. Doesn't have to be at the meeting. But that would be the first time we approve it and it needs to be done by the next day.
So.
Like I, I have a notary come to my house when I was given my brother's paperwork.
Yeah, I'm not looking to hire somebody, rewrite.
It'd be nice, but I'm just saying if you get desperate.
Or.
Reach out to Marie.
Any town clerks. Kathy in Marlboro. Marie. Most town clerks usually are not always. I don't, I don't wanna leave them hanging, but we kinda need to line someone up this week. And then if we're not ready to sign on Monday. Well, you know who else Barbara, she's, if she was up for it, Barbara Swan. So. I, speaking of notaries, I'll just, you guys up that subordination agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
There was another document they'd never given us about a different property. I assume because we already voted on it, that the board had agreed to it. So I went ahead and signed it on.
What was the other property?
Same, it was some technicality.
The same piece of property?
It's maybe a partial rating. I called Cassie. They, Cassie from Bailey Boyd that we had talked to and she said it's the same low to no risk. It's the same thing. The house is worth X, the roof is worth a little bit and the CDBD is worth a little bit. You really have no concern here.
Yeah.
But I went to Greylock and they had actually written fifty, they had written twenty, fifty thousand. But then put twenty-five thousand parentheses. So I had to, I had to correct that. But.
Okay.
All right. Nine-one-one department, state nine-one-one department, inter-municipal agreement.
Think that we already signed this.
We talked about it.
It looks like it's just one side.
Yeah.
It's just missing the town, it's just missing the town of Edgemont. That's all, so hopefully they can fix it.
You mean the whole document?
Yeah. Right, right after it came out, somebody from Edgemont.
Was like, what about us?
It doesn't say town of Edgemont. That's why I wasn't certain if anyone was gonna come in, but then it's like they can, they can figure it out.
All right, so they've taken over from Berkshire County Sheriff's Office. Um, quick business, donation of police department. Any questions? Otherwise we'll, we'll, we'll.
Move to a. L L maximum and Janet Max, Janet maximum two hundred dollars.
I hope that we accept the donation.
Thank you, well, Janet.
Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, town administrator updates.
I did, I received a restoration plan for the Sandersfield Road, uh, right away Rossamook, the one that was over there by Crump Road. That we had been tasked with fixing because of a member of the staff who decided to drive their. Tracked vehicle down in there to clear out some of the, the debris from the.
Beavers?
Yep. And so there's a, it's a, it's a list of ten items that we need to go through, everything from, you know, as simple as work shall occur during dry season. Meetings with the, with the environmental monitor, the person, Emily Stockman. And throughout just cleaning up things, replanting, all that by the end of May, by May thirty-first. So sometime in the spring, I imagine we'll start it, so. Basically, they're just, she's just looking for an okay to move forward, so. It was okay, I just gave her a call and let her know and move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds pretty good plan.
And then most of the work's gonna be done by the highway.
Yeah, yeah, that was all, I think just about, I think everything is listed here is done by the highway department. And all done by hand except where they have to like move big pile of stockpiles. We, you mentioned Jim's currently out till July first, you all know that, so. That's unfortunate. I am meeting with, um, Jim and Peter sometime in the beginning of January to go over things. Just to kinda have a phone call conversation, something to talk about, um, plans moving forward.
Are we allowed to talk because this wasn't listed on the agenda? Are we allowed to talk about this somewhat?
Um, a little bit, but if we wanna make any major motions or.
I'm not looking at motions, I'm looking to have a broader discussion, because I think we need to. Jim has been out for four months, we're looking at six months.
For three months.
Yeah, for three months, okay, okay, so.
It'd be nine months.
Nine months. You know, my experience historically, when they're out longer, the individuals don't return to work. I think we have to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. The best, of course, Jim gets well and comes back to work. We need to have a way that Pete is getting the support he needs to be successful. Then float, possibly groom in case Jim doesn't make it back. I think the other issue that needs to be looked at, and I don't know how this is done in the municipality world, but. Pete's on workman's comp and he's contributing, answering emails and doing other things. He's formally working. And you're paying, you're not paying the payroll out of the town, you're paying it out of the insurance for workman's comp. Is there a liability issue there where you're working him and you're paying him this way and he should be getting four? I don't know what the ratio of Massachusetts workman's comp is, but then you'd be depriving him of income. And being we're going, you know, my personal belief, no, you can do this for three or four months, but when you get to this type of timeframe. You gotta start and say, okay, look, we, we, we gotta make sure, you know, do our checks and balances. You know, Donna may say, yeah, you can do that for him, but I think, I, I think it's worth the call and say, here's the situation. How much can we depend on?
I think we should probably, I think you are raising good points. I think we should put them on a future agenda. So it's not to run into any open meeting on a problem, but, but definitely something worth talking about as time goes on. Maybe next week we can kinda start that conversation because at this point, we're basically told July one, right?
Yes.
With some certainty.
Yep.
Yeah, so we should, next week's agenda.
I'll get in touch with some other, uh, Maya, people like that.
No, I'd ask them, you know, we may want, we'll, we'll have a discussion next week.
And I think talk to Donna, Maya, Sarah.
Um, the last thing I have here is the checks that were the information last week, the Indus and Peckham checks have all gone out. Well, the checks have been printed, I just need two more signatures on the board and then that will be in the mail.
Okay.
I, I sent emails to the, um, to both companies.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's it.
So.
This paid a business?
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to fill you guys in that. The fire chief, the new assistant fire chief asked Roger and us to meet with them because of their concerns about. Being able to answer daytime calls. We've now gone from four people who were the most frequent. Participation, participators in weekday, weekday daytime calls. To three with one person having had a serious health incident. So, um, they're, they're pretty concerned that there's gonna be. The first time for Monterey to not be able to answer a nine-one-one call. I, we, Roger and I, um, basically floated the idea of, well, could, you know, would Justin and the two guys from. The highway department, who are on the fire department, be sufficient so that the pool of, of you would be. Enough to fill that gap and they remain concerned that that is not the case, that it, it would be too heavy. And that if, you know, for any reason they're out of town, there might not be someone to drive the vehicle or enough people might not show that they could actually stop their call. They are proposing and they, they actually gave us some numbers, um, the idea of. Trying to staff the fire department with the fire chief and the assistant fire chief. Five days a week, we, during the day, plus, um, two people in the firehouse. During days on weekends because that ship program has not been able to fill that slot. Um, so that'd be two people on Saturday, two people on Sunday. And. And. Roger, you know, I don't have a lot of viable alternatives. Roger and I see the merit of their arguments. Um, I'm concerned that people will think that this was like a backdoor way to get full-time employees. It, it's on our agenda anyway. We already had a plan to transition and we're gonna talk about that more during the budget process. Basically, this is a, an incident that occurred that had, we don't wanna escalate to a crisis. And we're using that as a kind of opportunity to also give this a trial run. Financially, I think it's workable, will be short. Probably based on the money they have now, their proposal would make us short. To get to the new fiscal year by about thirty K from the money already allocated to the fire department. Roger and I think we can, and I actually called Emily and spoke to her, we think we can probably make it work based on. Other things that are going on in town. It would, it might require doing a special town meeting before town meeting in May to transfer money from other budget lines. Although that could maybe be done. Through other means during the period where we're allowed to do that, because it would, we'd really only be short May and June.
Yeah, it's still later in the year.
Yeah, um, but I'm just throwing that out there for you guys to think about. I don't think we have to make a decision. Obviously, we're not making a decision tonight.
Can you, you send out an email with the numbers and we put it on the agenda for next week?
You, you have a copy of it too, right? Yeah.
Okay. Do that.
So, and you know, happy to talk to you guys more about it and talk about the numbers. I. I see the merit of the argument, you know, my biggest concern is I don't want people to think that we're trying to backdoor.
Yeah, but that, that comes down to educating the public.
Yeah.
And you know, the public safety, you know, is a priority. I, I just don't know how you know it. And then two is, even if you're not attuned to what's going on in town, you know. Berkshire Eagle is very numerous on particles that have, you know, it's not, we're not immune from the problem, we just had to. One of our best guys is there.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so I, I think we. Take the hit, whatever, we're gonna do, I think we'll do what's the right thing. That's my position.
And, and I'm kind of hoping that's, that we are doing that.
Too, and you know, some of it's about, you know, you think about, um, I was up in the town halls in a couple of weeks. But we've had nineteen million dollars worth of building permits. And we're here to protect these, this public safety of people.
And, and property.
Yeah, and property.
Yeah. Um, in, in good news, um, it looks like things are. Going forward with our cooperative agreement with Otis, which is good news, but also it looks like there might be some. Positive tendrils being put out by Marlboro's.
Is this ambulance?
Pardon?
Is this fire or ambulance?
Combine services, like really talked about, maybe we need to seriously think about it. And so it's very preliminary, but I, it's new movement and they've expressed interest. Coming to us rather than dogs it. And that, that's a different. Thing that's happened before and I think it's an important thing, because it means they're taking it seriously.
Well, yeah, we're all on the same boat.
Yeah, but being, but realizing that the boat is leaking and then water is filling up from the bottom up. And bailing isn't working, there's a difference between recognizing it and pretending that everything's fine.
Well, I think that, but you know, the individuals that lead those departments are obviously very qualified people. But when you, you know, when you sit around and you say, I'm gonna combine a system that's in. That's a, you know, that's a, that's a pretty thing you have to overcome. You go, okay, I gotta put this down. This is about the whole community, that, you know, the reservations are understandable.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, the panic when there isn't anyone to answer the calls.
That's the thing, if nobody wants to be answering that call, I can't come, or I'll be there in an hour.
Yeah.
Keep it under control.
So.
So no, that's good news.
Yeah, I thought it was too. That's all I know.
Anything else?
Mrs. Lincoln. Mrs. Lincoln. Other than that, how do you like the play, Mrs. Lincoln? It's an old one, but it still flies.
Oh, one last thing, I can't fill the meeting out. Donna is awaiting, it's not urgent, it's, it's Christmas and Hanukkah and the next week is New Year's, but. The town administrator evaluation, so.
I should have it in tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, what time you send New Year's?
What do you mean by two minutes or something?
So I don't think on, on the eve of Christmas and Hanukkah. Yeah, but probably sorry you all.
Well, we'll put it in your stock.
Okay.
I I put mine in at twelve thirty this morning.
No, no town emails allowed on Christmas and Hanukkah, that's, that's cool, that's a policy to make.
So, um, what, what is, I I've actually had people ask about Christmas Eve, there aren't a lot of people that work on Christmas.
It closes at one o'clock or something.
Does anybody have a um, anything negative about saying that one o'clock will close?
Every guys have heard it.
Oh, I did have someone ask me if the transportation was gonna be open Thursday.
Put that out there.
Yeah, uh, Jim, they wrote an email.
And the website's updated, but you know what, just doing, you know, lots. Yeah.
And it's the same thing for next week.
Cause I think I did it on the website.
You did do it on the website, it's on the website.
The twenty search in the second.
The email just said that it would be closed Wednesday, I didn't see, I mean, maybe.
I'll go back again and just resubmit it, put up the book, the, uh, the event, uh, and through the.
It doesn't hurt to remind people, yeah.
Cause it's, it'll be the same thing for New Year, a few years still.
Jim's email.
Do, does anybody know where that actually is? Bay State?
Okay, is he Bay State?
I wasn't sure if it was BMC or Bay State.
I figured Bay State.
I I guessed Bay State too, but guessing and knowing, not the same thing.
And sometimes. People say. You know, Bay State Medical Center is BMC.
Oh, that's true.
It gets a little confusing.
It's kinda like MCC, it's a Massachusetts Cultural. It's a Monterey Cultural Council and there's something else.
Monterey Community Center.
Monterey Community Center, right, that's.
Certified public talent, Community Preservation Act. I was looking at it.
Danger, danger, danger.
That's why Open Meeting Law, OML, says, don't use acronyms in agendas.
When I worked in DC, we were so deep in acronyms, it was insane. And I I strongly remember after I got brought to Japan to do a speaking tour by a group and then they came. And they brought a whole group of people over to the US and I kind of guided them around and they were jack, they spoke some English. But there were so many acronyms, it becomes, it's not navigable, like if that's all you do, you know what somebody means when they say EPI. But after the fifth acronym in a sentence, it gets insanity. I actually with an English to English translator, people would say something in English and I'd have to translate it. Of all the acronyms, I'd have to explain what everything was.
You know, Japan, that's, English is their second language.
They, I mean, they understood a lot of English, but what they don't understand is. Jargon or acronyms that are very specific for particular fields.
I spent a lot of time, when I was driving trains, kids would come up and say, are you there? Can we talk to you?
Were you in Japan?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
They just wanted to, that's.
That's what they wanted to, they said they wanted to practice their English.
It's so cute that they came to you, I love that.
Very, very polite and proper.
But also very open and willing.
Yeah.
Right, like.
My boss at that time, he was like six, six, they were just like, pass somebody, oh my god, it was huge.
I'm only five, seven and I remember walking around in this like, I forget the name of it, there's a big like. The store, like, you know, what Macy's used to be in the thirties or something, in Tokyo. I walk onto the floor, it was during the day, it's all women, and I'm like, easily a head shorter than every other person in room. I mean, taller, rather, right, like, I'm only five, seven, it's not like I'm a giant, I can imagine six, six, he would have been like. This much taller. It's crazy.
Okay, so for next week, I have the land donation, uh, D slash environmental review, the director of operation, operations position. And the fire department staffing. Probably send out an email, see if anyone has anything else to do.
I have a, I have an OSHA update. I got a lot of that.
About the same incident?
Yes.
Yes, I think you sent it out.
Yeah.
Minutes, I don't know if, they were kinda late, but.
I didn't see the second one.
Yeah, I was.
It's very late.
Which is fine, you were complying with LLL.
Um, November twenty sixth.
Yeah, I saw your Susan made.
My comments.
Comments or changes, I'm comfortable with Susan's, as you are, Justin.
They're pretty small. So, uh, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the minutes of eleven twenty six as amended.
I second.
We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And yes. I move that we adjourn. We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, has he, Anna spoke to adjourn?
Happy holidays.
Six fifty nine.
Seven PM.
Nah, six fifty nine, that's last.